In that case, I'd like to call the order of the Maplewood City Council Work Session for Tuesday, October 27th. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Crosley.
Here.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember, Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt. I see she's here, but I see it's filtering, so I will mark her as present. Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg, reform is present.
Thank you. The item of business tonight is to have a discussion of the proposed MRH School District Lower, Lomire Gate. So the first thing would be to have a presentation from the school district. Who do we have that's going to?
If it's possible to whoever would like to speak first, if it's possible to raise your hand and I'll bring you in. Alright, it looks like Julie Villa and Chris Holzer. So Julie's first. Julie, we brought you in. Can you hear us okay?
Yeah, can I share my screen?
Yes. So I need to make you promote to panelist. Is that correct, Sean?
Yes, it is.
Julie, you're, you're a panelist now.
Alright.
And so you should be able to share screen.
Not yet.
Hold on one sec.
There you are.
Hold on a sec, Julie.
Okay.
Alright. Whoops.
Yeah, Chris is gonna start us off this evening, but I wanted to make sure we could get the presentation up.
And I'm bringing Chris in as well. He asked to come in. Chris, you should be in right now.
You don't have a share screen option at the bottom of your.
Host disabled participant screen sharing.
Well then, let's fix, sorry. Anthony may have to fix that. Anthony, why don't you promote me to the host?
Glad I'm not the only one that struggles with this.
Oh, hold on, I got it, I got it. Never mind.
There we go. That's it, it.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Alright, can you see that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Chris, do you want to start us off?
Sure will. Thanks Julie. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Holzer. I'm the Director of Technology and Business Services here for the school district. I'm here tonight with Francis Schimmelier, who is Vice President of our school board, along with Julie Villa and her team from Itner. We also have Paul from CEDC, I think, present as well, all willing and able to speak to tonight's topic. So we're here tonight to talk to you about an idea we had that we think will increase the safety and security of our students, our staff, and our guests alike. One of the unique challenges we have with having a school here, right nestled at the back end of a subdivision or of a community here, is we have a public street that literally crosses right in front of our front door here. And anyone that's spent more than a few minutes here on campus will notice that all throughout the day, at various times of the day, we have students, staff, and guests that are crossing this street, which is at times quite busy. So as we move forward with our construction project here, we had an idea that we think will increase the safety and security of our students, primarily our students, but also our staff and our guests. Our staff that leave to move to other buildings throughout the course of the day are backing into that street. I myself, as I'm coming and going throughout the day, often backing in to that busy street. Most of the time it goes okay. Other times we have some, a few hairy events there. But our primary concern is that our students are able to move about our campus safely during the school day. And we have our gardens across the street. We have Oscar, our big oak tree that our middle school kids climb very regularly now. We have our bees in our gardens down the street. So this idea is mostly about being able to protect our students, but also about being able to secure our campus during the day from those individuals that we may not want to be here. So with that, I will turn it over to Julie and her team to talk you through some of the details.
Sure. Can you make Paul Boyer a presenter? He's our civil engineer and he's going to talk through the traffic pattern plan that he has prepared. For you all, I believe we shared this, and I've made a couple of updates to it in the meantime.
Like, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm the civil engineer for the project, and as Chris was indicating, what we were thinking was closing off or gating the access through the school's property, which would basically encompass Lomire from Gerhard to Martini. And during school hours is when it would be done and special events. So school hours would basically consist of closing, they are shutting the gates around 8:45 AM in the morning. That would allow for more or less late arrivals. And then it would open up again at a little before three or dismissal. So again, the thought of that is that would secure the campus. But also, for instance, in the morning, opening up at 8:45, it's, it's kind of late enough in the morning where I think a lot of people early, early birds leaving for work and so forth will be able to use the, use the lane. And then again, like in the evening with the gates open again after three, they would be, be able to use Lomire as well. So minimizing the inconvenience, but still meeting the security needs that the school is looking for. The gates themselves would, would consist, were wavering between swing gates or or sliding gates, but they would be electrically operated and they would have, most likely would have, for instance, like a key fob. So the key fob for the bus drivers or administrative personnel is what we're thinking. We would also have to have a Knox box on it for the fire district. If they were to obviously come through during an emergency call, they would be able to access the area as well. And then we would also post signage at either end. The signage basically indicating the restricted or gated access during school hours, spell out the school hours just to give instructions for, for the residents. But we're, the intent would be that we minimize disruption of traffic as much as possible, but also provide the security that the, the, the school district is looking for and the safety for the kids. But that, that's basically it in summary, as far as the intent on the gated access.
And that's a close up of the gated area, but we just wanted to also let you know kind of bigger picture what we're planning for the school. We're proposing a two to three story addition at the northwest corner of the existing site, off of the existing gym. The buses that are parked there currently will be relocated and will actually be moving the curb cut that goes into the existing bus lots will, so that will become sidewalk and curb. We will be providing a 25 foot fire access lane, also for deliveries down the west side of the site. That will also, that will be gated as well to keep anybody besides district personnel and first responders from that side of the building. We're proposing a smaller addition in the back, facing the trap to the existing cafeteria. So those are those pieces a little closer up. So that's the 25 foot fire lane down the west side of the, the new addition. So then we are looking at what that does to the front face of the building. So that brings the this piece, this new piece of construction out to the existing sidewalk. And what we would like to do here is to provide a drop off or bus lane along the front. And then the gates here at Gerhard and at Martini. I've kind of sketched in the curb line that would fill in where the existing curb cut down into the existing bus lot is today. And that's, that same image on an aerial. The same pieces. And then this is kind of what we're thinking for the gates. We aren't really far enough along to quite understand if it's a rolling gate or a swing gate. But there is existing black aluminum fencing along the west side of the parking lot right now. So it'd be something similar to that in style and materials. And then we also envisioned some kind of masonry piers or pilasters with some school signage on either side. So that's really it. In summary, I have building plans if we want to dig into that anymore. But we, we were really hoping to get your feedback this evening, answer any questions that you all have. And then kind of see where to go from there. We know that there's some specifics we need to work out. Obviously, the exact location, the gates, the exact operation and hours that they would be closed, but we were hoping to see what you all thought this evening.
Okay. I, I have three questions myself. The first one is the black line that I see on the screen right now, is that going to be a gate all the way around?
No, that's, that's the property line.
Right.
Yeah. So no, it would not be gated all the way around. We'll maintain or replace as needed the chain link fence between the, the property and the pool. But we will not have a fence line along the front here. There will be some kind of can't, so in addition to this entry, which is the proposed high school entry, one of the goals of the construction project is to separate the middle school traffic from the high school traffic. So the west entry into the new addition will be the high school entry and then the middle school administration area is moving to where the central office currently is. So the, the door that you currently enter the building in from Lomire will actually be the middle school entry. And then we'll have a canopy piece across the front to designate kind of a student gathering area, drop off and pickup. And also built into that something to secure, further secure the courtyard from folks just walking by on the sidewalk. But no, this is not meant to be a fence along this entire black line.
Okay, so the area outside north of Lomire is essentially unsecured. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Next question is, where are you going to park the buses?
Chris, are you able to answer that?
Not quite. We, Mayor, we are, we are currently engaged in negotiating a space to park our buses offsite.
Okay. And the, are there any other questions? Are there questions from council regarding the physical configuration before I ask my next question?
Not right now.
Okay. In, in that case, you know, it's obvious that, you know, you thought this out and that the certainly protects the, the school district's interest. Have you done any engagement with any citizens yet? And when you do, what is that going to look like?
As part of the long range facilities task force planning process, last fall, we did engage the community and it was actually very we, we, someone on the community actually brought up completely vacating Lomire on that section. We decided for a number of reasons not to necessarily go down that route, but it was positively received to more securely define and, and provide separation at the edges of campus.
So I'm not sure how many of the residents are aware of the, of these proposed changes. And so I'm, I'm trying to figure out, you know, even though you engage with them before, obviously as city council, we will be hearing from the residents if they have any, any concerns with regards to this, to this project. So you know, we would like for the school district to be the one to to engage with the citizens and, and have those discussions and listen to their concerns. Not that we wouldn't be participants, but you know, I would like that conversation to, you know, to, to happen directly with the residents in the area, so they can explain how it would affect them either positively or negatively.
Can I ask a question about the time? Cause you mentioned that the school hours, but then you also talked about special events. So I was curious that means. Does that mean athletic events? Does that just mean when there's like the elementary school has a performance in the, in the theater? What, what is included in that?
We are, I can speak to that. We are working to further define what special events is, but initially what we can, what we do envision is, you're, you're exactly right. I mean, an elementary concert is a perfect example of one of those spaces in the evening where there's a two hour space where we have consistent civilian traffic back and forth between the parking lot and the building. And especially in the evening hours, especially this time of year when it's dark outside, outside already, creates quite, quite a significant safety concern. So that, that would be a perfect example of something that we're, where we would consider closing those gates to provide a safe entry and exit for, for our community and our students. Some of our high, more highly attended games or some other ideas that we've had. Basketball will usually pack the house, especially if we're playing Brentwood. So folks always like to see us beat Brentwood. So that would be one that we would consider closing those gates, at least while the game was filling and perhaps at the, at the dismissal of that game. Our idea is that we, that we do provide a safe and secure environment for our students and our guests with the least impact on our community. So as we work to further define those spaces in time, I would hope that we would be able to partner with you in soliciting your feedback on areas or points of the day where you would feel that absolutely not having those gates closed would be preferable to having them open. So I hope that answers your question, Councilmember.
Well, so one, I guess, question or concern I had is that the lot, like, so I, you know, I have kids in elementary and that we've gone to concerts there and the lot's not big enough for everybody. So I guess my question is if there's only one entrance and exit point, is that like, how is that going to work on that street? You're going to have, I guess that was kind of a concern. People clogging up, there's only one street now. They can come and go on.
Sure. You're absolutely right. So luckily the city of Maplewood has been gracious enough to allow us to use the, the lot down there at the pool as an overflow lot. So one thing that we would absolutely have to do is, as we're communicating to our guests, is providing either shuttle transportation back and forth. We've done that before. Or at least directing our overflow traffic down to that lot so that we're not clogging that area up. I do think that your concern is valid and that's something that we'll definitely need to work through here. But traffic control, I guess, much like if you were to go downtown, downtown for a ballgame and the lot's full, the lot's full. And we would need to be able to indicate that to folks so they weren't getting stuck and in a, in a dead end parking lot.
Okay.
So when, when there's special events, obviously the parking lot will be used for the, for spectators, you know, public. And so the gates will be open at that time to allow people to access the parking lot?
That's our thought. Again, some of these finer, finer points, we are going to have to work through logistics of how that would work. And obviously weigh the pros and the cons and also the impact on the community.
Is, is, is Gerhard's two-way, right?
Gerhard is two-way, yes.
Yeah. I, I personally think this is a a good plan, you know, with the limited space and resources that you know, the school district has. I think this is, this is about as good as it gets. I can't imagine there's all that much traffic that would be impacted closing off Lomire between Gerhard and Martini. Martini really being a cut through street to quick trip to the school or what have you. I know there's a, a couple of residents along there, but they're already used to having school functions anyway and a lot of traffic being on there. So yeah, I, I like the idea. I think it's great.
And I, I also think it serves the school well. And you know, if, if we didn't have any opposition from you know, from residents, you know, there would, there'd really be no issue. And that, I don't know to what extent there might be. There are, anytime you affect traffic, there's, you know, there's people that aren't happy, but you know, the idea is to make sure that if, if they're okay with it, then, you know, then certainly I'm okay with it. Then the question becomes, do we need to do, do we actually need to vacate the, the street? Are there other options with regards to, you know, because once it's vacated, my guess is it's fairly irreversible. It becomes property of the school district.
Yeah, I mean, I personally don't think we need to vacate it now. I would kind of wait and see how this pans out first before those discussions happen. The placement of the building on the corner, I think is a good idea. Yeah, buses are going to be a problem, but there's a few parking lots close to the area. I think you can probably negotiate with to park them, but you know, I, with, again, with the school district being landlocked and, and the, the amount of kids coming to the school increasing pretty dramatically. You know, I think it's important to, to, you know, look at stuff like this and make sure that the kids are safe, you know? I'm sure people in Gerhard might complain about it. I don't, I can't imagine the traffic being any worse than it already is with the school already in session there. All they're really trying to make sure is that, you know, kids don't get hit or faculty doesn't get hit as they're crossing from the, you know, crossing from the parking lot or from their, their garden or tree or whatever they have over there. So.
I guess, can I clarify? You keep mentioning Gerhard, but I guess what I'm understanding, that's not the street that's going to take the hit. It's Florent that's going to take them, correct? If you're gating Gerhard there, right? Gerhard will get people who suddenly can't go through. So people who are going down Lomire to get to Martini and can't. Right. You know, once they do that a couple of times, they'll figure that out. Florent will get a little bit of increased traffic from people because that gate up at the north end of the parking lot will still be open. So people who come and go during the day will have to do it via Florent. So it will get a little bit of increased traffic, but again, because the gates will be open for arrival in the morning and dismissal in the afternoon. Most of the traffic will still be able to come and go as it currently does. Yeah, I, I was Sean, I mean, I think during the daytime, I think I don't see that it would necessarily have a large impact on the, I guess my concern is more in the evenings in events and how you end up defining that. Maybe where you might see some residents, you know, maybe push back a little, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm sure they will a little bit, but I, I, I'm still having a hard time. You know, Lomire shouldn't be a busy street anyway. It shouldn't be a cut through street. It's not really designed for it. You know, it's got a break in it. And you know, most of it is, is either in front of public property or the, the school district. I don't, is there even a residence on?
Yeah, there's a couple.
One?
Yeah. Yeah. I think two, maybe?
I thought one of them was the schools.
One of them is the school. Well, no, those are both Oakland. So this one?
Yeah, there's one there.
Okay.
Well, I'm thinking though, too, though, the problem is if you're gating that off, so when people are coming, they're not, they're all going to have to use Florent when, when, when it is gated. And then during the day, I agree, I don't think that's as huge of a deal. If you have people coming for an event at night, you have, everybody has to come down that road. So that's, that's what I'm thinking about.
Oh, oh, like for special events and stuff like that?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. When you're doing it nighttime.
Why, why wouldn't you open the gate at Lomire and let people park there and then when the lot's full, so the overflow goes over to.
Well, I was confused. I thought it was gated while it was filling and then they were going to open it and then gated again. Am I misunderstanding that?
Again, I think we're working through logistics on that still, but Sean, I think your idea is, is well taken is while the parking lot's filling, it does make sense that we would allow traffic to enter the parking lot from the low, from that Gerhard and Lomire corner.
Okay.
Otherwise you would force all that southbound traffic down Florent. And I'm pretty sure those neighbors would not appreciate that.
Right.
And you also had mentioned that one resident there on Lomire. If we are, again, formative stages here, folks, but if we are able to get those buses to be able to load and unload on the front of the building there in between the confines of those gates, while the gates wouldn't be closed then, that would make the resident happy because currently we're loading those buses right across from them. And they are typically not too pleased at, at dismissal time when that's happening right in front of their house. So this might be a, this might be a good way to perhaps compromise with them.
Yeah, my feeling is if the gates are open till, till 8:45 in the morning, that covers a good portion of the rush traffic. And certainly in the afternoon, anything after three o'clock. I don't know what the traffic count is there. I don't know if you've done any traffic studies, but I can't imagine that that, that between those hours that we have a whole, a substantial amount of of through traffic there. And even if we did, I don't think we need to. I think it's a matter of convenience that you know, we have a preponderance of one-way streets in Maplewood and, you know, delivery people have complained about it, but they deal with it. And.
Can I say something? Hello? Um, I've been trying to get oriented edgewise. Sorry, Sandy. Getting a quick question, and this is probably possibly for Paul, the civil engineer, but also bringing up Barry you just brought up. Has there been a traffic study done as to what the impact of, of this is, is potentially going to be when kids come back to school? I realize right now, while everyone is still virtual, it's kind of a moot point, but you know, has there been any anticipation of how this is going to change traffic patterns? That's part one of my question. Part two is would you consider gating off the entrance from Florent into the school lot in order to affect a compromise so that fewer students are going down Florent Avenue or, or less school traffic in general going down Florent Avenue to get to that lot?
So Councilmembers, the answer to your first question is, we have considered, we have not brought on a traffic consultant yet, but that would be the, the obvious next step. What we wanted to do is present this first and define what the parameters were. One, if this is, would even be considered and then to get an idea on the parameters, because again, when, when they do the traffic study, they're going to determine the effect of the gated access based on the times and the peak times of travel with, with traffic. So we wanted to, I guess, have parameters defined if this would be considered and, and determine the, the times that the gates would be closed and open. And that would be factored in, in the, in the study and they could do traffic counts and so forth. From the, the second question as far as gating off the access in the parking lot from Florent. I mean, I defer that to Chris and possibly, you know, future discussions and troubleshooting what the impact is not only for the school, but for the residents as well. Obviously, we're trying to bring this up as painlessly as possible, both for the residents and, and for the school. So it's, you know, it's kind of a symbiotic relationship where, 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 we're helping the school district and having the least impact, but that would be something that we can consider as far as with the traffic study. I don't know what the, it's hard to say because I don't know what the increase would be on Florent Avenue. You know, people take the path of least resistance, you know, so the students are, if they're going to come in there and dramatically increase the flow and that causes a problem, then we would, we would, we could potentially block that off and, but it would direct traffic in another route and just, we wanted, we'd want to see what the impact is to the school and the least impact to the residents, obviously. So it, I, there's variables that would need to be explored.
Yeah, and I can speak to the student parking issue. I think, I think your concern there is valid because we do, you know, I started working at the school. You know, I started working at the school district almost 21 years ago now, we it was hard to find even one, maybe two students that drove to school. And in these past, especially six to eight years, the number of students driving to school every day has has dramatically increased. I don't have a a number on that, but it's it's significant. So one of the things that the high school has been working to do is to encourage students to park down on the pool lot during the day. Because this is one of the council members' points, there just isn't enough parking given the situation. So having 20 cars not parking there that would belong to students would definitely lessen the traffic down Florent. You know, kids are going to do what kids will do, but I, we can encourage them to to choose a different path as they head south towards the campus rather than choosing Florent. And that's something that we can work with Kevin on very closely.
So, Chris, thanks for bringing that up because I think that's actually going to be sort of the crux of the issue when we talk to the Florent residents. The ones that we've already heard from are very concerned about students parking on the neighborhood streets. So can and will the school be not just suggesting, but somehow mandating that the students park in the Aqua Center parking lot?
I think that is definitely a conversation that we need to have here, but I would, I'm I am confident that we will be able to make a compelling argument to do exactly what you said, which is to 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 create a scenario in which students are disincentivized from parking in those spaces, to put it kindly.
I have a couple things, but Sandy, I didn't want to cut you off.
Well, I I'm good. Thanks.
Um, so my first thing is just a recommendation. So as you're making your plans, I would encourage you to have a specific way. Especially as the details around special events are solidified. I'm thinking about a way to provide some sort of advanced notice to residents of what that schedule may be, what they can expect. I think that would be something that could be helpful. I'm and generally, I'm trying to get a sense, my question is, I'm trying to get a sense of your anticipated or hoped for timeline for this to be implemented, if you all have a sense of that.
I'll speak to the communication plan. I think that along with signage that being able to telegraph very clearly for our community when when those gates would be closed, even you know, the day to day stuff, I think we would become pattern relatively quickly, but I agree with your point that the special events could potentially cause disruption. So having a clear communications plan is a great suggestion and one that I'm writing down to discuss further internally. I'll let Julie speak to the other as far as time.
As far as the schedule, we would likely include this as part of the bigger construction project package, which will go out to bid next spring. So the very earliest that we would be implementing this would be next summer, so likely the next school year or even the following. We have identified about an 18 month construction schedule. So no sooner than I would say next fall, fall of 2021, and possibly as late as fall of 2022, depending on kind of where things end up. We'll obviously need access for construction vehicles and things like that. So it it seems like it will probably be at the later end of that timeline.
Thank you.
You know, Sandy, I was thinking about the students again, and, you know, one of the cornerstones of the district is citizenship. So perhaps that's the angle or the tack that we take as we discuss that with our students, that they, in order to be good citizens, they need to respect our residents and not park in front of their houses and driveways.
Yeah, that's one way to do it.
Do you feel that you have sufficient direction at this point?
From the perspective of the school district, yes, it sounds like I need to come back and work with the admin and school board on coming up with a communications or feedback loop with our our residents that will be immediately impacted by this. So I think that that's definitely doable. Julie?
Um, yeah, I think we will need to look at better defining the traffic study and getting that underway.
Okay.
I've heard your petition to kind of be the approximate locations of the gates on either end of Lomire. So we will, we can move forward and be able to provide some more details on what they look like and how they work in the future.
Council members, this is Francis Schimler from the board. Just wanted, Board of Education, just wanted to say thank you for the consideration and the notes. I will certainly take back these to the board, particularly with the interface with the community where our communications lead has been has a list of folks and we would like to certainly take the lead on engaging them and continuing to work collaboratively with council and anything that gets brought up around that. And then some of these more specific issues have will will be working out details around as well, but definitely wanted to bring this to you as early as possible in order to elicit your feedback and and things we should be working on. So appreciate the conversation.
Okay. There are there other questions from council members? Or comments? So there's no more discussion than we can look at adjournment?
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Okay.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you again for everyone's attendance and the meeting is, the work session is adjourned.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night.